I'd like to call to order the Arredell County Board of Commissioners four o'clock pre-agenda meeting for Tuesday, February the 18th, 2025. I would like to ask County Manager, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir. No adjustments.
We do not have any special recognitions or awards tonight, and we do not have any appointments before the Board. We do have a public hearing at the six o'clock hour to consider the proposed amendments to Chapters 7.5 and 10.5 of the Arredell County Code of Ordinances. And now we come down to the administrative matters, and I'd like to turn it over to the County Manager.
Thank you. Before we start administrative matters, we've kind of done this in previous meetings when we have a new staff member. So, and I want to introduce Darcy Heath, who is right here in the back of the room. She is our new Strategy and Communications Manager. So she is, has already hit the ground running. We're really excited. If you've looked, checked out our county Facebook, you'll see there's lots of new posts, and she's trying to work to try to get everything streamlined and get everybody working together. And she's going to be working with us with our strategic planning and working with a consultant for our community survey that we were going to do. So, Darcy, I don't know if you want to say anything for the group, or you just want to wave. Either way is fine. But just want to make sure that we put a face with a name and give you an opportunity to meet Darcy in person.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Okay. The first item up on administrative matters is a request from the Sheriff's Office to approve Budget Amendment Number 32 to accept the Fiscal Year 24 JAG Award to Arredell County Sheriff's Office and the City of Statesville Police Department, the amount of $34,133. Ms. Caroline Taylor is here to make this presentation to the Board.
In October, the Sheriff's Office came to us for the latest JAG grant. And after the application was submitted, Arredell County was awarded the grant in the amount of $34,133. $10,314 is awarded to the county and will be spent on thermal optics and crestrols, as it was presented in October. And then the additional 23, or remaining $23,819 is awarded to the City of Statesville. So we're just requesting approval to, of the budget amendment and to accept the JAG grant.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the Health Department for approval to change the existing clinical services fee. And Ms. Jessica Ridgeway is here to make this presentation to the Board.
Yes, so I am in front of you today to request permission to change our fee for CPT code T-1002. That is a nursing code that we bill out. It's billed on a 15-minute basis, and it's billed only to our Medicaid patients, so it's billed to Medicaid only. And this was found by our cost settlement consultant. We need to get the fee down to be closer to our reimbursement. And so I am requesting approval to change the fee to $19.03 per 15 minutes. And it will be a positive impact on our cost settlement dollars if we do this.
Consent?
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is a request from IT for a Spectrum WAN circuit upgrade from 500 megabytes to one gigabyte. And I'll be presenting this one on behalf of our IT Director. And this is something that we've looked. It actually increases the speed that we have and the bandwidth that we have, and it's also a cost savings. So it's going to save us about $200 a month. So we're requesting a three-year contract for a savings of about $200 a month, and it increases our speed and our bandwidth.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent. Thank you. The next items from Parks and Recreation for approval to apply for the North Carolina Amateur Sports Youth Sports Grant Program to purchase youth sports equipment at Jennings and Stumpy Creek Parks. And Mr. Daniel Leatherman is here to make this presentation to the Board.
Yes, good afternoon. The first request I have is, as Manager Milton noted, from the amateur sports organization. This one is specific to youth sports equipment. It's very similar to the next grant. Each county in North Carolina does have an allotment for this, and so we are asking to apply for this.
Any questions?
What will we buy with it?
You could buy anything that's dedicated to youth sports. So if you think about pitching mounds, if you think of temporary fencing for outfield's, things to upgrade Stumpy, as well as some startup cost at Jennings.
More-for-us facilities-type equipment.
It's, you're not eligible for building facilities, but it would be supplemental equipment for our sports field amenities.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you. And Mr. Leatherman also has the next item, which is a request from Parks and Recreation for approval to apply for the North Carolina Amateur Sports Endowment Fund to fund amateur sports project at Jennings Park.
So a very similar request. This is not tied just to youth athletics, so this is something that we can use as we look at collegiate, adult athletics. Same type of funding, but is limited to the $5,000 ask. For this, you would see more so the adult-focused things, or things that we can be very flexible with that offer youth and adult-oriented services. So very similar pot of money, but just a smaller ask limit on this.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent. Perfect. Thank you. The next item is a request from the Library for approval to apply for E-Rate discounts. And Ms. Julie Moore is here to make this presentation to the Board.
Good evening. I'm here to request applying for E-Rate discounts to the Federal, the Federal Communication Commission. This will be the county's 28th year participating in this program. Currently, when we apply, we're receiving 60% reimbursement for our internet services. So for FY '26, we have $13,140. That'll be spent on internet for Troutman-Harmony in Statesville, and E-Rate discounts will cover $7,884 of that. Applications are due by March 26th, and then this will be for the period of July 1st through June 30th. And I typically file for reimbursements quarterly.
We appreciate all y'all applying for all these grants. I know y'all actively are looking. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
And speaking of grants, I'm going to tag on to what Commissioner Haupt said. Brittany, right there is Brittany, who I think everybody knows that works in the administrative office. She is going out and looking for every available grant that's out there and assisting our departments and making them aware that there are grants out there to try to address some of their needs. So Brittany, thank you for your efforts in that. The next item is also an item with the Library. Julie actually has the next three items. And this is a request from the Library to apply for a grant in the amount of $27,500 from the Unity Cemetery Preservation Fund. Julie?
This grant will help us expand our goal of serving cemeteries in Arredell County. This specific grant will be for the Meckneck Cemetery out on the Point. It's an African-American cemetery. It does have people who were buried prior to the end of the Civil War and then up into the early 20th century. There is no matching funds required for this grant, and we are working with the Homeowners' Association. If you have any additional questions, though, I brought my cemetery expert, the Mistress of Cemeteries, as known by all Library staff, to answer any questions you may have about Meckneck.
Have you notified the NAACP and people like that that you're doing, going to do something like that potentially?
Yes, I've reached out to Curtis Johnson, who's the President of the Mooresville Chapter. I have not heard back from him yet, but since we worked with Todd Scott in the Statesville Chapter for the Green Street one.
I figured you had. I just wanted to make sure.
We definitely want them involved.
You let them know what you're doing and let them take part in that. Thank you.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Perfect. Thank you. The next item is a request from the Library to apply for a Library Science and Technology Act Easy Grant in the amount of $39,750 from the State Library of North Carolina. Julie?
This first grant project is to install a story walk with musical instruments, outdoor musical instruments, at Jennings Park. We're partnering with Arredell County Parks and Rec on this initiative. Daniel and Jacob took us out to look and see where the best area to install this would be, so we've determined a great spot to put this. Since we are collaborating with Parks and Rec, we received, we receive a reduced match, and Arredell County Parks and Rec will be supplying that in-kind by installing the story walk stands and the musical instruments. The Library will be responsible for changing the story out every quarter. And with our new outreach librarian and the mobile library, our goal and plans are to have story time at the park in collabora, in alignment with switching that story out quarterly.
Don't laugh, but somebody asked me, they saw our agenda and said, what does that, what is that? I've never heard of it either.
A story walk? We have one currently at Scotts Rosenwald Park and at the Bentley Center. So it is where you take the spread of a book and you have it on this, on the stand. It's laminated. And each spread is out throughout a trail, so it encourages early literacy and activity. And our new outreach librarian, Amanda's very excited because Amanda's been assembling all of the story walk pages. So she's happy to pass that duty on to our, to Grace, our outreach librarian. But she's going to incorporate, like, things to do activities, or, you know, like hop to the next stand, or do X, Y, Z if we have extra pages. So it'll really, you know, promote that early literacy and interaction with the parents.
Did you said instrument with this one?
And musical instruments, yes.
So have you selected those, or do they come with a story, or is that?
Amanda's can talk about the musical instruments because she's done all the research.
Fascinating, because I love the story walks, but when you said instrument, I wasn't quite sure if you had drums set up, or what you're going to have along the?
So most of them are perc, some percussion-type instrument. They all have mallets attached to them, so the kids can, you know, grab the mallets and drum on them. They're shaped like flowers, or trees, or mushrooms.
Oh.
So they kind of blend in with the nature.
Yeah. Oh, I can't wait to see that.
Yeah, when we met with Daniel and Jacob, they suggested trying not to have mallets because they can be stolen. But most of the instruments that we found that are outdoor do have mallets. So part of the grant, we requested replacement mallets, like one for each.
I didn't know if they'd be like the pin at the bank that was attached to the?
They're attached.
Okay.
If anybody steals anything.
We anticipated, so we?
If anybody steals anything, we got a nice little place to couple.
[laughing].
Questions? Consent?
Consent. Thank you. Julie has one more, and that's a request from the Library to apply for a Library Services and Technology Act Easy Grant in the amount of $15,525 from the State Library of North Carolina. Julie?
This is our second grant project that we're applying for through the State Library. This one will be to purchase a Charlie Cart, which is a mobile kitchen. We're going to be partnering with Andrea Sherrill over at the Ag Center, the family and consumer science agent. She's already been doing programs for us, like healthy eating and wellness programs for adults. So our current plan is to have Andrea come once a quarter utilizing, she'll do programming with the mobile kitchen. And then Library staff will conduct monthly programs for children, teens, and adults. And we're going to incorporate our seed library and our small container garden we have with, using fresh items incorporated into the mobile library, the mobile kitchen. Since we are partnering with the Extension Office, that does allow us to, again, have a 10% match. So that will make our matching funds for this project $1,725. And the rest of it will be, the kitchen will be covered by the grant.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Perfect. Thank you. The next is a request from Finance for approval of Budget Amendment Number 33 to appropriate $568,000 of county-wide fire district fund balance to replace a totaled fire engine at South Arredell Volunteer Fire Department. Ms. Caroline Taylor is here to make this presentation to the Board.
At the winter retreat, the Board approved to replace, use fund balance to replace the fire engine that was in an accident for South Arredell Volunteer Fire Department. So this is the budget amendment to appropriate that fund balance, that replacement.
Have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
Have you called them and told them it's going to snow tomorrow?
Have.
Okay, good. [laughing]. Nope, no fire trucks on the road tomorrow.
The next item is a request from the Finance Department to approve a tower lease agreement for the portion of an area of real property located at 129 Tower Drive in Mooresville, North Carolina, to Pinnacle Financial Partners. And Ms. Kaitlin Sparks is here to make this presentation to the Board.
Hello, everybody. I am here to ask for the approval of the 10-year lease for a tower in Cottle Creek Township area of Mooresville at 129 Tower Drive.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kaitlin also has the next item, and that's a request from the Finance Department to approve a three-year master service agreement to update the jury software for the courts.
I'm also here for the three-year service agreement to upgrade from Service Commander to Genesis with our jury software. And I have any information for questions that you have.
Any questions?
Question on this. What else do we pay for, for the courts, other than?
Yes, the state should be doing it all. Yes, the state should be doing it all.
Exactly.
This is, this is something that's, that's different. And, and I will say this is something that I've asked a lot about, but they say that jury selection is the responsibility of the local government. So this is software for jury selection. It actually runs on a county-provided PC. So this is something that we pay for and that we do. Other court functions are the state provides, the staffing, things of that nature, and the software. However, we provide the facility. We pay the utilities, the maintenance and all of that, of the facilities that they utilize, and the furnishings of that. But for this, the only reason we're paying for this software is there is a provision that jury selection is the responsibility of that local government. So that's why we're paying for it.
And if I may, we are currently spending $6,995 on our annual support service that's currently hosted on our network, pulling our resources from RIT. And this solution, we will be spending approximately $5 more, and we'll be getting the brand-new jury software system that goes through and searches and makes sure that Tommy Smith that lives on 123 Main Street is the exact same person as Tom Smith that lives on 123 Main Street. On top of that, we'll be spending $5 more. And our IT staff will be able to just do everything through the cloud.
Questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
Thank y'all. The next item is a request from Administration for approval of Budget Amendment Number 31 in the amount of $101,000, and to award the bid to Ellis Building Company for the Health Department HR Conference Room Bridge Project. Mr. David Sleby is here to make this presentation to the Board.
All right. Thank you. The Arredell County Health Department has moved to the second floor of the Arredell County Health Department, uh, HR Department has moved to the second floor of the Arredell County Health Department building on Turnersburg Road. This provided the HR Department and Wellness Center, who, who work together, to work in adjacent to each other. Part of the Health Department, yeah, part of the HR Department project move was to provide a training and conference room area. This space is, needs a pedestrian bridge, and that is the best word we have for it, but we're going from a upper level to another upper level across a secured corridor of the Health Department. So this will be HR Department on top, Health Department on the bottom. This pedestrian bridge is to be built from the HR area to their new conference room. The, the bridge will provide a safe and private area for the Health and HR Departments. Both Departments will have their own separate entrances. Through the inform, an informal bid process, Ellis Building Company of Statesville was the lowest responsible, responsive bidder. Budget Amendment 31, which you have in front of you, reflects Ellis's bid of $76,432, as well as $14,568 for expenses for renovations for the H, for the HR Department move. The budget amendment also includes $10,000 for remaining project expenses. The Board of Commissioners are being asked to consider the approval of Budget Amendment 31 for $101,000 for the Arredell County Health Department HR Conference Room Bridge Project, and to allow the County Manager to sign the contract. Any questions?
May I get anything? Consent?
Consent.
Mr. Sleby actually has the next item as well, and this is a request from Administration for approval of Budget Amendment Number 30 in the amount of $8,515 to amend the Hall of Justice space study with CPL contract to include the public defenders offices. Mr. Sleby?
Thank you. In your packet, you had a copy of the contract and the amendment to the contract, but the public defenders offices at the Arredell Health Department were, was not included in the original contract scope with CP&L for the Hall of Justice Space Study. The attached contract for $8,515 will provide, will include the public defender offices in that study. Any questions?
Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is a request from Tax Administration for approval of the January 2025 releases and refunds, and there are no Commissioner names on this list.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you. The final item is a request from Administration to approve the minutes from the January 21st, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting, and the May 4th, 5th, and 15th of 2023 budget workshops. There are a few corrections. You have a page in front of you for a correction to the January 21st meeting, and then we have some name spellings that need to be corrected with the workshop minutes, and those will be corrected as well. But with those corrections, we're asking approval from the Board for those sets of minutes.
We have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
And that brings us to the close of the administrative matters, brings us down following the agenda, down to the announcement of vacancies occurring on Boards and Commissions. Do you want to go over those now, or are you going to wait till the six, or?
Is it okay if I take advantage of both opportunities?
Yes.
We're still looking for individuals that are interested in serving. So we have six appointments on the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. We have one appointment on the Arredell County Transportation Advisory Board. We have six appointments on the Nursing Home Advisory Committee, and we have one appointment on the Troutman Board of Adjustment, which is an ETJ representative. If anybody's interested in serving in, in any of these Boards or Commissions, please contact us. We would, we would love to have someone volunteer, volunteer their service to give back to their community, and these are the ones that we're, we're looking to fill applicants for.
Manager Milton, if someone is interested in these positions, there is a description online of what that position entails? Is that correct?
Yes, there is. You could go on our website, and you can read about the different Boards and Commissions that we have, and see if you're, and if you're interested in serving on one or three, you can list all of those on your application. Applications, we keep those on file for six months. So once you fill out an application and you express interest in, in any of those Boards and list those, then we'll keep those on file.
And since you're rolling, do you want to touch base about the appointments to Boards and Commissions we got at six?
Absolutely. Just to let you know that the Board of Equalization and Review, we announced that at our, at our previous meeting, we have five appointments for those, and these are actually all five reappointments. They, all five individuals currently serve on the Board of Equalization and Review, and they have all volunteered and agreed to serve again. So those are the five for consideration. We have not received any other applicants, and these are all reappointments.
Good deal. Do we have any unfinished business at the four o'clock hour? What comment period is tonight? It's the six o'clock hour. Do we have any Commissioner updates for the six, for the four o'clock hour?
No.
Any new business?
Uh-uh.
County Managers report? Anything reported before?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Bring us down to closed session. We do have a closed session this evening pertaining to economic development in accordance to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A4, and property acquisition in accordance to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A5. Do we have a motion to enter into closed session after a five-minute recess?
Oh, move.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session following recess. We are in closed session following recess.